Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board Regular Session for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Mr. Gaynor, would you please call the role?
Ms. Wright.
Ms. Wright is not able to attend this evening. She has a family emergency that she's attending to. She may get on the Zoom call. Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Mr. Heinz?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Let's get started with awards and recognitions.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you all for joining us tonight. This year, the district introduced our first ever holiday card contest. Students across Tiger Nation from preschool through 12th grade were encouraged to craft an original piece of holiday spirited or winter themed artwork for a chance to be featured as the cover of the 2021 CHUH Holiday Card. We received more than 100 beautiful and creative submissions from students. Students, parents, staff, and community members have the opportunity to vote on a number of submissions to select the community choice winner. I then selected the overall three winners. All of them, along with their art teachers, have been invited to join us this evening. The contest winners will be awarded a $50 cash prize or a Tiger Nation swag bag courtesy of the Heights Schools Foundation. Winners, when I announce your name, please join me and Jim Posh in the center to take a group photo and receive your prizes along with a special print of your artwork. Congratulations to our community choice winner, Miles Hernandez. Come on up, Miles. Miles is a fourth grader. Miles is a fourth grader at Canterbury Elementary School and recipient of a Tiger Nation swag bag. In third place, Dominic Nix. Dominic is an eighth grader at Monticello Middle School and a recipient of a $50 cash prize. I believe Dominic's art teacher, Kelly Watchhouse, is here. Please join us as well. Is Kelly or Dominic here? Kelly's here. Okay. In second place, Nina Billick. Nina is a first grader at Canterbury Elementary School and a recipient of a $50 cash prize. Oh, right there. And for the overall card selection, Ruby Togo. Ruby is a 10th grader at High Tie, a recipient of a $50 cash prize, and featured artist for the superintendent's holiday card. Ruby? Thank you again to all the students who took the time to participate in the contest. Copies of the superintendent's holiday card featuring Ruby's artwork are available at the Board of Education for purchase by the community. Proceeds will benefit arts education in CHUH. And special thanks again to the Heights Schools Foundation for sponsoring the winning prizes. Next, we have Tiger Team Member of the Month. We have the opportunity to recognize our Tiger Team Members of the Month. These CHUH staff members have been recognized by their peers and community for going above and beyond to continuously contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. Your colleagues who nominated you have shared these short messages for you. From the Board of Education, Joan Webster. No matter what is asked of her, Joan always gets the project completed without complaint. From Boulevard Elementary School, Rachel Gray. Rachel is amazing. She is transforming our library, helping the students find their love of reading and books, and does not hesitate to jump into any task asked of her. Canterbury Elementary School, Carly Schlesinger. She goes out of her way to support the students and is always coming up with new ideas and strategies. The students love her and look forward to working with her. From Delisle Option Center, Jean Gassman. Her attention to detail and conscientiousness makes her a very valued and respected member of the IT team. From Fairfax Elementary School, Jennifer Nelson. Mrs. Nelson is an amazing teacher and mentor. I have learned so much from her in such a short time. From Garrity Garrity Elementary School, Michael Lauer. No matter how busy he is, Michael always tries to assist others. He is very creative in finding solutions and has made Garrity a happier place. From Heights High School, Cassandra Boudin. Cassie designed an exemplar lesson that was observed during the recent high school building walkthrough. The intentional ways that instruction was designed to have all students participate, get all students writing, and still foster collaboration, critical math content, and fun all at the same time was inspiring to observe. From Monticello Middle School, Mustafa Itayen. John facilitates a daily lunch and after-school homework club for all students. He goes over and beyond his job requirements. From Noble Elementary School, Lisa Hussein. Lisa volunteers her extra time to support classroom teachers with responsibilities that are outside of their own. She is always kind, always gracious, and always a team player. From Oxford Elementary School, Rebecca McAllikin. Ms. McAllikin goes above and beyond for our students at Oxford. She is very supportive to her homeroom and makes a great deal of difference in her students' lives. She helps to make Oxford a better place. From Roxborough Elementary School, Karen Wilmich. With teachers like her who give 100% dedication to the success of all children, our children's possibilities are endless. There is someone who believes in their success. And from Roxborough Middle School, Dion Harris. Mrs. Harris goes above and beyond her role as a paraprofessional. Her calm demeanor helps students who are in conflict. She is professional and supportive in the classroom. Congratulations to our winners. Can we all please give them a round of applause? And this concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Our next item is statements from the audience. I'd like to remind everybody to state your name, the purpose of your statement, and I'd like to remind everybody that they need to keep their comments within five minutes each. The first person we have is Gabe Crenshaw, and she's going to be speaking about metal detectors. Hello, Gabe. Welcome.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Gabe Crenshaw, and I come to you as a parent of a ninth grader, parent of an alumni, spouse of an alumni, and an alumna myself. Equally important is my dedication and passion as an advocate for education equity. I am here to express my opposition to implementing the use of metal detectors and the creation of a policy to implement at Cleveland Heights High School. I know that if a policy is created, the implementation will come soon after. In addition to implementation and creation of a policy, I am against the trial run of using metal detectors. I ask what evidence you have to prove metal detectors prevent violence at schools. Metal detectors give a false sense of security and safety to some, but to students, they make them feel less safe as if their school environment is one of chaos and disorder. Most schools that use metal detectors are predominantly black. However, most of the major school violence happens at predominantly white schools. Why is it acceptable for black children to experience extreme surveillance at schools when they experience it so much already in the world? We know that there are families who live in our district who would never send their children to Cleveland Heights High School because it has a majority black student body. They will say it's because of the academics, but that is not accurate because my daughter, who is an alumni, will graduate from Dartmouth College in June. If a student aspires to pursue an Ivy League education, this can be accomplished at Cleveland Heights High School. Let's not give these individuals one more thing to say like, "See, I told you so." It's so dangerous at High Tie. They need metal detectors. I do not want my current student to think this type of security is normal beyond the airport or to feel like her teachers think she and her classmates are violent and threatening. If there are resources for metal detectors, let's invest in other alternatives before something so punitive. Let's collaborate with organizations who are experienced in youth violence prevention along with parent and community engagement groups. Let's not use resources to make our school feel like it's housed on a prison compound. The school-to-prison pipeline is a system that truly exists. Let's not participate. Let's amplify the importance of building relationships between teachers and students so that see something, say something can continue to be the best method for learning threats. Finally, installing metal detectors would perpetuate the education inequity and inequalities that black students continue to face. Let's not support systemic racism by creating and implementing this policy. I could discuss further, but time does not permit. Again, please do not create a policy nor implement the use of metal detectors at Cleveland Heights High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Angel Fasolo?
My name is Angel Fasolo. I have a number of things I just want to bring up. First of all, I was here last week, spoke to the board after the meeting. One of the things I brought up was the fact that a couple of principals in our district had asked to go to remote last week. To my face in this room, I was told, I was questioned where I get my facts, that they asked to go to remote, that our superintendent said no, and Jim, you told me that didn't happen. Turns out, through email correspondence, through people here, that was true. So when people inside the schools are asking for help and their building leadership reaches out to Miramar for help, they aren't getting heard. And this is a theme throughout our district. Students and staff throughout this district are not getting heard repeatedly. There is a select group in this district of families, community members, and some staff, most of whom are leadership already, that have a real voice here, and we have to do better. When I send my son to school, I would hope the people inside the building, if they have concerns about that building and they're speaking to the administration in that building, when it's beyond a building level, building level supports, whether it's COVID, whether it's security issues, any kind of issues inside the building, when they contact Miramar, that's, they need to be heard. And a couple of administrators coming down from central office, as I'm told, is not a sufficient support. We're already lacking proper social emotional supports throughout our entire district, in every single one of our schools at all grade levels. You have S R funds. I don't know why they aren't getting used for proper social emotional supports. We need those at all levels. We need to do better with respect to COVID levels and mitigation. The dashboard numbers are not right, and you know they're not all right. And I can understand that that's got to be a really difficult thing to keep track of right now. I get it. But we're getting reports about what the numbers are like inside the building when that's not actually reflecting reality. So you're sending home a bunch of people last week to spend their Christmas, their winter break, sick, testing positive, and then they're all expected to come back January 3rd, ready to go again. What's different with this surge right now from the past is now we're all burned out. The parents, the students, the teachers, everybody, the medical system, everybody's burned out. We get it. But you're not listening and you're not providing supports. I probably should have had everything filled out like I normally do. But we've got a lot of security threats. We've got medical, we've got health threats. We've got so many concerns right now. You have to start listening to the teachers, the staff, the families. Because you're, you can't go on like this. This is not sustainable. And the spin that we keep getting, and to be told last week, where do you get your facts? And to be proven that I was right? Jim, that's not right. You have people throughout the district who can't speak up because a lot of teachers and staff can't speak up because there's a certain chain of command and it never gets up this far. Surveys are skewed to get the answers very often that you want. Detailed responses in surveys are ignored repeatedly or discredited. We have to do better. So when we come back, before we come back, it's got to be planned out. You can't wait till January 2nd, everybody wondering what's going to happen. It's been two years. Nothing about any of this is novel. It's not novel anymore. And to keep punting. Last week, people tuned in to find out what was going on, and you punted to this week, to our break, a much needed break. You just need to do, you need to do a lot better for all of us, and you need to start listening when people start speaking up.
Thank you, Angel. Jalen Bellar? You're reorganizing the list?
We're reorganizing the list, yeah.
I need Jason, I need, there's a reason why people sign in, and I don't want to be disrespectful for Jalen. I really don't want to disrespect Jalen. Would Jalen please come to the podium? Shari, if you'd like to make a statement, please make your statement right now then, okay? I'm sorry, this is, this is, you're all entitled to your five minutes, and I would love to hear it. Okay, so, so you're, okay, so Shari's not going to speak. Okay. Okay, Jessica Sumner, please. There's a reason why people sign up. I don't want to disrespect them. Please. I'm sorry, you're, you guys are disrespecting this meeting, and I would like to honor this time for public comment. Shari, if, Jalen, if you're, if Jalen's not, if you're going to speak for Jalen, Shari, would you please speak? There's no reason why you. Melissa, please sit down. Melissa, please sit down.
And I will say that Jalen did ask why the Zoom call-in that's available for staff and board members isn't made available to community members who want to make public comments, particularly during a pandemic. We have two people tonight who wanted to make a comment and are having someone else read it because they're home with COVID. So.
I'm very sorry, but anybody that needs to comment or communicate with this board, we have many vehicles where they can relay to us. There's been no statement that we've received via email, none, okay? And we very welcome this.
Okay, what, all I'm saying is that people are wondering why they can't call in by Zoom, just like staff and board members, because we have that ability, we have the technology, it is a pandemic. So we have two people with COVID and other people are reading their comments tonight. I'm reading on behalf of Jalen Bellar. Hello, my name is Jalen Bellar. I was sexually assaulted on December 12th, 2018.
Excuse me, I need to interrupt if I may. This is, we do not have people speak on behalf of other people, especially if this is a student. We do not mention students' names.
This is not a student. This is an alumni. She's a legal adult. People come in and read other people's words all the time. I was asked to read this.
This is a student.
It is not a student. She's an alum. She's over the age of 18 and asked someone else to read her statement because she has COVID. There's a health barrier to her coming. If you'd prefer, I can call her and she can read it herself, and I'll hold the microphone up to the, the phone up to the microphone.
Well, what I'm curious about is why hasn't Jalen reached out to this board with, with their, her, his statement, which there's other ways to do it besides standing in front of a podium?
There's not a way to speak at a board meeting unless you come in and sign on the clipboard. There's not a method. You had it when you were meeting remotely, people could.
Please, please, you're all very, you're disrespecting this whole policy that we have here. We're trying to honor this, this public statement. You're changing people's names. You're putting words in someone's mouth that I don't even know if it's her words, okay? And.
I'm not putting words. You're welcome to call her. She would read it herself if there was technology available. She's available right now.
It would seem to me what would be appropriate was. Shari, I'm going to reset this for five minutes. You're entitled to make a five-minute statement.
Okay.
Make your statement, please.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jalen Bellar. I was sexually assaulted on December 12th, 2018. Not only was I sexually assaulted, but I was sexually assaulted in a Cleveland Heights High classroom. Not only was I sexually assaulted in a Cleveland Heights High classroom, but I was sexually assaulted by a Cleveland Heights High student. Luckily, I had a trusted friend who encouraged me to speak up and tell authorities I had a trusted teacher in the Cleveland Heights schools. I spoke up and I told my public speaking teacher, who is a retired police officer and who is now a retired Heights teacher. If it were not for the trusted, the teacher I trusted, I am sure that my story would have gone a little bit different and be more like several others in this school district. Despite having a trusted adult within the school administration, I was still failed by the school district as a whole. On December 13th, I spent most of the day telling my story over and over again to my trusted teacher, to counselors, to principals, to school social workers, and thankfully, on the same day, I was able to make a police report. I sadly have to share that not every victim, not every survivor has that same opportunity to report. The next day, December 14th, my father walked me into the building after school had started so that I had no chance of seeing my perpetrator. We told security that we had permission to be in late since I already had a safety plan. My safety plan was not created by a caring, trusted, trauma-informed staff at my school. It was fiercely fought for by my father in the face of adults who refused to do their duty to keep all students safe. If not for his strong advocacy, I would have been left disregarded by administrators and without the safety plan that was my right and my need. My plan was that if I wanted to arrive later or early, I could do that. And on top of that, I could even go directly to three places in the school if and when I ever felt uncomfortable. The first principal who spoke with us was the current interim high school principal. She immediately told us she knew nothing, and I was just to continue my day until she heard something about my case. My father immediately asked for a different principal since it's current interim. My father immediately asked for a different principal since the current interim high school principal only wanted to dismiss us instead of trying, of helping or trying to hear what was happening. I felt belittled. Sadly, like many sexual assault survivors in our schools and community, that was only the start of it. A few months later, the perpetrator walked into my chemistry class, the same classroom where it happened. The classer, the perpetrator, was removed because he had assaulted me in class, the class I was told he would not be in. I started to have a panic attack. Without saying anything, I walked to one of the three places in my approved safety plan, a trusted teacher. That teacher advised me to talk to the current interim high school principal to let her know why I walked out of class in case I would be marked absent. She was dismissive. She told me, it's a he-said, she-said situation, you have no right to walk out of class. I texted my dad to let him know what happened. I'm sure we can find the email that my father sent calling her out on that behavior. There was never a response. I wish I could give every little detail, but we'd be here for hours. The summer of 2019, the perpetrator was convicted. He was found guilty by Cuyahoga County Juvenile Court. I was so relieved. He would be punished and I would never have to see his face again. That certainly was not the case. There is no mechanism for the court to notify schools of convictions of juvenile sexual offenses. The only way the school found out about the conviction was through my father. Everyone said he has a right to his education. That was repeatedly thrown at us. The perpetrator was now a convicted juvenile sex offender on probation and he has a right to the same, to an education in the same building as the person he assaulted. In no way should he have been allowed to be in the same building as I was, especially after being found guilty, let alone to have access to other young women without having gone through sexual offender treatment. Why do convicted assailants get to attend in-person school when we have had options and online courses for credit recovery long before the pandemic? Before, during, and after the police investigation and criminal court process, the school did nothing for me. I was a victim of sexual assault, assaulted by a Heights High student on the Heights High campus. And when the student was found guilty, not a single administrator reached out to me. No sympathy, no regards for my safety, no regards for me. At this point, I knew that the school district was not on my side. The only thing keeping me in school was my stubbornness. I felt that, why should I, the victim, the assaulted, the survivor, have to leave everything behind because of the choice the perpetrator made to violate my body? Every day, I was scared because the district did not care about me, my safety, or other students' safety. Heights High had a convicted juvenile sex offender walking around their school for almost two years and no one cared. They only cared about the perpetrator's right to education. Every time the district administrative staff told me that my perpetrator had a right to his education, they told me, you do not have a right to your body, you do not have a right to your safety, you do not have a right to your own education. My school was a place I was supposed to feel safe, but I was only belittled and disregarded, only to come to the knowledge that the perpetrator did not actually live in the school district. Therefore, he did not have a right to the public education at Heights High. Despite this legal issue, the administration gave him the right to be a favored athlete. He was given the right to make bad decisions, he was given a right to harm me and many other girls. He was given every right and I was given zero. Heights High administration will be held accountable for dismissing, belittling, and betraying not only me, but many others who have stories almost identical to mine. Cleveland Heights University High School District is to be ashamed. Major change is demanded and this is only a start.
I would strongly encourage Jalen to attend our meeting next month, when she could attend and read her own statement. And I would encourage her to reach out to Ms. Kirby, our superintendent, or any other board member and explain the situation. This is something we are looking at. Angel, you've, please, Angel, please stop. Angel, please stop.
She called while I was speaking and I didn't interrupt. But Jalen is available if you want to speak to her. She certainly is planning to come back. She wanted this statement read tonight, after the walkout that happened 10 days ago. That was important to her and we as adults can make that happen.
I, as I've said, I encourage her to, to come to our board meeting on Monday, next, next, I'm sorry, in January, to, to read this herself.
What, look, I don't know that it needs to be read again, she'll probably say something else.
Can, excuse me.
What's the date of that meeting?
Shari, we have a meeting to run, this is very important stuff.
What's the date of the meeting that you want her to come to?
First Tuesday, January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Tuesday, January 3rd.
It's our regular meeting, January 3rd, please.
It's January 4th. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, January 4th.
Yeah, she doesn't have to say it again, she'll say whatever she wants to say.
Well then, well then she can reach out, she can reach out to us individually and tell us herself.
She doesn't want to reach out to anyone individually, she wants to speak publicly. She wants to speak publicly, that's the point.
Shari, may I ask, I would love to be able to review the statement if she would be willing to email it.
Sure.
I'd like to review the questions that she asked.
Sure, I would be happy to let her know that. I'm sure she's watching right now and, so, that was Mr. Heinz Jalen.
Jessica Sumner, please.
I'm also reading on behalf of someone. And I do have a statement of my own.
Can, can you tell us your name, please?
My name?
Yes, please.
Cupid. I'm reading behind.
Can we have your last name, just so we have, have it for the record?
Harden.
Can we have your last name too for the record?
Harden, H-A-R-D-I-N.
Okay, thank you.
I'm an organizer for the Enough is Enough movement within the Heights Student Union. These past few months, I have tried to revise the dress code at Heights High School. Some administration helped and others didn't put in any effort. Being comfortable in our own school is so important and the fact that other staff and administrators aren't working to provide the best learning environment for their students is disappointing and unacceptable. The students who attend CHUH City School District have been failed countless times and it needs to stop.
Melissa Wood.
Good evening. I'm speaking on COVID. Board members, Superintendent Kirby, Mr. Gaynor, and all those watching in person and at home. Tonight, I would like to talk about our plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services. I will say from the beginning that I am not here to ask for an immediate decision to go remote after break, but because COVID transmission in our county is at extreme level, levels, whether it is safe and responsible to continue in-person learning should be the primary topic of conversation tonight. As a parent and a teacher, I know how important it is that we offer in-person instruction, but we are not following through with our own plans for safe return to school and if we cannot cha, change that, we cannot be in school. For all those listening who are not aware, our district was required to submit a plan to the state to show how it would use us or funds to safely reopen. Those plans included changes to our HVAC system, distancing, desk shields, masking, and contact tracing. I will speak now about the high school, where we have seen the greatest COVID spread and I have personal knowledge of safety conditions. Desk shields are gone. Distancing in most classes does not equal three feet, sometimes barely one foot, or not at all. Cleaning and disinfecting is supposed to be taking place, but reports from staff say that this is not being done. The only mitigation strategy that remains is the mask requirement and contact tracing. But it has to be acknowledged that we do not have universal appropriate mask wearing. And because we don't, our contact tracing and rules for quarantine are insufficient. It is hard to say exactly what percentage of students are not wearing their masks appropriately. Some classes are very good and in some classes, half the masks are worn beneath, below the nose. And there are many holdouts, kids who really don't wear the mask at all. Some teachers try to enforce, others don't. Some teachers and administrators set an example by appropriate mask usage, others don't. I have classes where I can either spend the whole period telling a few kids to wear their masks over their nose, or I can follow a lesson plan. And the serious conversations when multiple students in the class are out with COVID, those are also ineffective. It is December. Why are we facing this problem? Because we started with the idea that all we needed was a gentle reminder to wear the mask. We don't talk about it enough, the science behind why we wear them, the responsibility we have to keep, to keep each other safe. I shouldn't be hearing, but my teacher lets me in class, responses to requests to put the mask back up. No adults in the building should feel okay pulling their mask down when speaking to students. We must model the behavior we want to see. And it must be consistent. Universal mask wearing in every building and every class, because our contact tracing guidelines are based on the assumption that people in classes are wearing the mask over their nose. The unmasked at Heights Instagram site was a public service. Anyone who saw it could see the extent of the problem. Unvaccinated kids who are exposed to a positive case in the classroom rarely have to quarantine because supposedly the students around them were all wearing masks appropriately. The vaccinated don't have to quarantine because of course, everyone again was wearing their mask. Lately, I've been getting, as a parent, notices at least once, if not twice a week, that my ninth grader shared a class with a COVID-positive student, but she has never been a close contact. Maybe because she's vaccinated and we still are operating under the misconception that vaccinated students can't catch and transmit COVID. Or because there is the assumption that there is this universal mask wearing. But now we know that breakthrough cases are the status quo. Both of my nieces have COVID and are fully vaccinated. A teacher friend of mine is fully vaccinated and has had COVID now three times. We have to stop the farce. Masking is not being enforced and it must be to remain in school. We have immune-compromised students, we have unvaccinated students with unvaccinated family members, we have fully vaccinated staff members who are immunocompromised, teachers who are pregnant, who are getting COVID in their 36th week, teachers awaiting liver transplants, teachers with young children at home who can't get vaccinated yet, and everyone who gets COVID risks the chance of long COVID. Staff report.
Melissa, can you please finish up?
Staff report similar problems exist at Rock's Middle. So I will get basically to what my, what, what I feel like we need to do. We need the messaging to come from this body. We need the Board of Education to make the policy and the staff at Miramar to carry it out. We don't need the people with their boots on the ground who are trying to build relationships be the mask police, because you can't be the mask police at the same time as build the relationships. You know, that firsthand. So we look forward to your reports ASAP on what you're going to do as far as mask compliance, actual transparent communication of community spread, and and possibly a reorganization of our reopening committee and, and, and a, and a look at all those plans that we have, that we had in place and what actually is being followed and what we can do. Otherwise, I don't see us returning safely. Thank you.
You have a name here of Cupid regarding sexual assault? Rosa? Cupid? Cupid? Yes?
My freshman year at Cleveland Heights High School, a girl was raped by a group of boys on school premises. She died later that year. A former friend of mine was date raped by her now ex not long after that. And even I remember the whispering from our peers and the defending from his teachers and the silence from all the rest. I can't even imagine how much more vivid it must have been for her. My junior year, a couple I'd sat at lunch with a couple times suddenly split up one day. He too had date raped her. I remember having to sing in school choirs side by side with my friend's assailant. And I remember her leaving the program because she didn't have the option to look the other way. Fast forward, pandemic graduation, then being sent off to college last August. One of the first things I learned about being on campus was that Pike spikes, fraternity Pi Kappa Alpha having been roofing at their parties for decades. This March, a student died at one of their hazings. I didn't know him, but I attended the march and the memorial anyways. About a month later, the fraternity was disbanded on campus. As satisfying as it was, part of me resents that only there did they draw the line. Treating sexual assault like a team sport or fraternity bonding exercise, totally fine. Accidentally killing one of your own, three expelled and 18 suspended. Some bodies are treated better than others, even postmortem. Fast forward again, I'm back in my home city. A girl I've never met posted on Instagram about how she was harassed and assaulted. I messaged her because I wanted to do something about it and only days later, we're organizing a walkout, reaching out to media outlets, making group chats, sending emails, and even all that did not prepare me for the day of. It was exhilarating being in the presence of so many people who cared, but it was in turn disheartening to watch the administration snicker and sneer and walk away from the sidelines, no visible interest. Person after person came up to speak, sometimes needing me to hold the megaphone for them, sometimes squeezing my hands so tightly because they were breaking down. Tears froze as soon as they left people's faces, but even with that, you couldn't miss them. It, it was a communal catharsis. But too many of the stories sounded like those of my friends. Too many faced negligence and indifference from peers, school officials, administration, and sadly even parents. Too many said this was only the first or second time they'd spoken about it. Too many felt safer outside on the front steps with complete strangers around them in the cold than they ever actually felt safe inside the school. One of the universal rules of life is you can't change the past, but by processing and acknowledging in the present, we can commit to changing the future. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Rosa?
Hi, my name's Rosa Kabasovich, I'm a Cleveland Heights resident. I have some prepared remarks, but I just wanted to start off to say this is my first school board meeting and I'm honestly, I was a little shocked by the escalation at the beginning of the public comments. I don't understand the utility of relying on, you know, bureaucratic process or bylaws when it comes to just like hearing from the community, so I would hope that board members would reflect on that after this meeting. Okay, so, I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Education to listen to the students and recent alumni who have spoken out about their experience at Heights High and to believe them. I know some of you socially and I believe all of you ran for election to this unpaid position because you care about children. I need you to keep that care at the forefront as you listen to their stories and decide how to move forward. The students I have spoken to have talked about their feelings of abandonment and dismissal at the hands of the administration tasked with keeping them safe after they reported sexual assault. Some of their assailants were convicted criminally, yet still the district did not follow safety plans that were demanded by their parents. There was even a video sent from a current student to an alum where a CHUH teacher is openly discussing that alum's assault with students and saying she's just speaking out now for attention. That is absolutely unacceptable and creates an environment where students don't feel safe coming forward if they've been harmed and where kids see modeled to them dismissal and contempt of sexual assault survivors. At the walkout they organized, I heard so much raw emotion and pain from these kids, as I'm sure anyone else there can attest to. They disclosed sexual violence they had experienced both at the school and elsewhere in their lives and talked about the sexual harassment they experienced at school. The district has a dress code which is strictly enforced, but somehow staff cannot prevent them from sexualization, harassment, and assault from their peers. It's clear that many things must change in the district. The students want to change to the dress code as the idea that young woman, young women are responsible for their behave, the behavior men respond to their existence with directly leads to the victim blaming that destroys so many young people and perpetuates rape culture. They also have expressed that consent should be taught at all grade levels. There are many national models for this, this can be implemented immediately. There are many national models for this. This can be implemented immediately. It's also clear that there's been a breakdown of trust between students and the administrators tasked with keeping them safe. From the speeches at their walkout and individual conversations I've had with students and alum, it doesn't seem like that breach of trust can be remedied soon enough for that administrative staff to be involved in reforming the system that they built. While there are certainly Title IX violations and potentially legal action coming to try to force the district to take these students' experiences seriously, it's crucial that work begins now to change this culture. I talked to people that were at Heights 15 years ago who experienced the same thing. It's clear that a culture anchored in limiting the district's legal liability is not keeping students safe. We need to refocus and remember that the children entrusted to the district's care are not served by a well-funded school that teaches them that sexual assault and harassment is not a big deal and should be kept private. These students are demanding better, and I'm in awe of their courage and sense of responsibility for each other. What the district is doing now is not working. The training, the processes, they are failing students in their most vulnerable moments. Learning cannot happen when students feel objectified, sexualized, victimized, and unsafe. They should be able to trust that the adults around them will get them the help they need if they've been hurt and won't insult or dismiss them in that process. These students deserve better. As the only elected representatives managing this institution, it is your responsibility to demand better for them. Don't just rely on administrative presentations. I know that the superintendent and some staff presented to you last week, but don't just rely on that. Listen to these students. Lean into the care and responsibility you feel for young people that brought you to this position and help these students find justice and create a culture in CHUH schools where sexual assault and harassment is treated as seriously as it demands. At the walkout, the line that sticks with me is a student saying to other students that they have a responsibility to listen to and believe each other because the administration had failed them. This is not their burden. It's all of ours. Please reflect on what you hear here tonight and in the coming months and lead this district into a more compassionate future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa. That concludes public comment. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Can I ask, with the consent agenda, are the building projects part of that? The, they are part of it?
They are.
I'd like to consider it and discuss.
You want to pull those out, Dan? Is that what you want to do?
If you don't mind, yes. Or we can just, we can just do it as part of the discussion.
I think I'd prefer to do it as part of the discussion.
That's fine.
And then we can make a motion to pull them out if.
We don't need, we won't need to.
Okay.
I won't need to.
I mean, they should be part of the discussion.
Sure.
There was a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that we consider the consent agenda.
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, there's quite a bit of repair projects, bids specifically. And I just wanted to report out that the Lay Facilities Committee looked closely at all of these about two weeks ago. Weeks are just flying.
One week ago.
Flying by. And each of these projects was discussed individually. And the, you know, I think that I can report on behalf of the Lay Facilities Committee that the committee supports all of these.
And the other comment is that the two roofing projects are projects which we had to pull because there were no bids on them last year. So these are new visits of previous work that didn't happen, so we still need it to happen.
And I would just like to comment that I'm glad to see the Monticello Middle School trip is on the agenda, something to be approved. I know we approved the Roxborough trip a couple meetings ago because that was taking place at a different time and I'd asked about the Monticello trip.
Do we know, can we talk a little bit about sort of the fail safes, if you will, on these trips for the families? And where I teach, we lost a DC trip a few years ago because the bus company went bust. And so, you know, and then we had a, you know, my son's baseball trip due to COVID was canceled at the last minute. And so can we just talk about what's, what are the fail safes built in in order to ensure that the money is safe?
So my understanding is the contract with the company that is coordinating the trip allows for full reimbursement to families should the trip need to be canceled due to COVID. So I'm glad that that ability is there because that is important.
That's good to know.
Financial investment.
Am I correct that both Monty and Rock's Middle are going to DC in the month of March? No?
I was going back in, yes, they actually are both going in March. Roxborough is in March as well.
Okay, it's just that we saw that.
Just some, they just came through at different times.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's important that parents won't lose their money if the trip has to be canceled. That's important because obviously we want our students to have these opportunities. It's hugely valuable. But as we are well aware, who knows what's going to happen tomorrow?
Any other comments? Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll? Mr. Paj? Yes. Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
We have a business services item, approval of statement of district compliance with nutritional standards?
Yes, we do. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Kirby, Mr. Gaynor. We will have a short presentation. So this is a yearly requirement. It's district compliance with nutritional standards. And we will have Ms. Rosedale and Ms. Totino. Ms. Rosedale runs the district's food service program for AVI. And Ms. Totino is the nutritionist that actually comes in. And you know, you've seen some of those where they go out into the schools and they do some presentations of this group here makes that all happen. So I'll let them run the short presentation for you.
It's always good to hear about the food offerings we have. We always hear great, positive things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Petcak. Good evening, Superintendent Kirby, Mr. Gaynor, board members, and guests. Thank you for having us. This report is an informational presentation only and no board action is required tonight. We will have a very short slideshow presentation for you. Under Ohio Revised Code 3313.814 requires a yearly presentation to the board of the district's compliance with nutritional standards regarding competitive food sales Board Policy 8500. To ensure compliance, there are several checks that we put in place to help determine this, including reviewing Board Policy 8500, having access to a licensed dietitian onsite, menu compliance with USDA standards, and ensuring all à la carte food items meet smart snack approval. In a nutshell, Board Policy 8500, competitive food sales, states anything outside of a reimbursable breakfast or lunch sold to students such as snacks or beverages must comply with the USDA dietary guidelines and be smart snack approved. AVI has its own K-12 dietitian onsite at CHUH, Kristin Totino. She supports the district to ensure compliance by analyzing the menus, working with the nurses and staff on food allergy management, nutritional education such as food tastings and presentations for staff and students, and assists me with ODE, standard food service audits. I will have her speak on her own behalf to explain what we are doing and how we are doing it to ensure compliance with Board Policy 8500.
All right, so we have to do a menu compliance worksheet. So I have to analyze all the menus every year to make sure we're in compliance. And that means that we're having enough grains in our meals, meat meal alternatives, and fruits and vegetables, and then also our milk. So it's required that we have those requirements. And then this is an example, the link is an example of how we do menu compliance and how I figure it out. So I import all of the menu items that we have and then I break it out with the different contributions. So if you go into the tab on the bottom. Yeah, so this is where I put all the menu items and then it'll go into the Dropbox once we have it all in there. And all those boxes are just meat meal alternatives, grains, and all the meal contributions requirements.
So last year, we had a lot of bag lunches and stuff. So you do this for not only the cafeteria items, but also the bags that were distributed out to the community?
That's correct, yes. So this is an example of the National School Breakfast meal requirements that we're required to have. So it goes through and shows the amount of grains that were required. So for each day, we're required to have one to two grains. So that could be cereal, here's one grain. And then we compare that with, you add a meat meal alternative like a cheese stick that also is part of the grains. So we can use that as a contribution for grains as well. And then we also want to make sure we have our fruit and our milk for breakfast. And then this is the National School Lunch requirements that I use when I'm looking at the menus. As you can see, there's a lot of different vegetable subgroups that we needed, that we're required to have, such as like starchy and red orange vegetables, like your carrots and tomatoes, as well as there's a certain requirements for meats and grains for the whole week. So then we have smart snacks. And these are à la carte foods that we're not, we are selling and they're not part of the reimbursable meal. So in order for an item to be smart snack compliant, it needs to have a fruit, a vegetable, a grain as the first ingredient. And then there's certain calories and sodium requirements, like so less than 200 milligrams of sodium, less than 200 calories, and less than 10% from saturated fat. So for example, if a smart snack compliant would be like a bag of Doritos is what we sell for smart snacks. Huh?
Reduced fat Doritos.
The reduced fat ones, yeah. We want to make sure it's reduced fat.
The baked ones, not the good ones.
Right, right. So we have a calculator for it and I just click, it's an example of it and it brings it up. And I just put in whether it's the first ingredient in the menu item. And then... So once we answer the questions, then the last step is to write in the nutrition facts. And then after that, it will tell me if a menu item, or not menu item, but an à la carte item is compliant or not compliant. And then I print out the nutrition facts at the end and we keep that on file in our office.
Thank you, Kristin. With the completion of this presentation, this fulfills the district's compliance with nutritional standards per Ohio Revised Code 3313.814. Thank you for your time. We will be happy to answer any questions or follow up.
Can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
How many meals do we serve a year approximately?
Um...
What's a normal year?
There is no normal year.
Well...
You can get back to us on it. I know that's usually a number that gets...
Well, COVID meals, I think last year, I think it was about a million. With the breakfast and lunch participation, it's kind of by school. Like for instance, some of the elementary schools were at 86 to 95% at breakfast, you know, and that's where I look at it. Middle schools are around 86% to 90%. The high school's a little bit lower depending. This year has been a bit lower, around 75%. But at some school, at last year, I believe it was around 80%. So on average, a CEP school should be roughly around 82%. When I did the numbers pre-COVID, I haven't really looked analyzed. This year, we were at 83%. So we're actually above the national guidelines for a CEP school.
So that's the percentage of children who are eating the meal?
Correct.
Percentage of students are actually eating the meal that's provided? Okay, yes. So I'm assuming these numbers are higher than they were before we went on to our universal lunch and breakfast plan and we're getting more participation than we had when children had to pay for them.
Yes, that was back in 2015, 16. We became C, the district became CEP in 16, 17. And so we have, we have just done our four years and then we just renewed for another four years. So we are right now, the district is able to provide free breakfast and lunch through 2023, 2024.
Great.
That's excellent news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Is there anything that you think we should be changing to improve the offerings that we give our students or anything that you think we should be doing differently than how we're currently doing it?
I think it helps with these food tastings that we've been having at the elementary schools. I know it's last year and this year has been kind of challenging with COVID, with 20-minute lunch periods. But I know the year before, we had like the pepper tasting challenge where we had like the colored peppers, like the red, the green, the yellow, the orange peppers, where we went around to all the elementary schools and middle schools and had the kids taste them. And that's something that they might not have eaten at home. So it's just encouraging different types of food. And I feel that sometimes at home, they don't get that opportunity. So using the food service program as an education piece. You know, I don't know if you guys have gone to the breakfasts at some of these schools. They bring their big bags of Doritos and hot chips and it's kind of scary what parents send their kids to school with. So, you know, just more exposure, I guess, would be good.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
So Jim, even though as Anshul said, there's no requirement for you to act on this, the language says presentation, but we do have an on-here's action simply as a safeguard so that whatever governmental agency doesn't come back in the end and say, oh, we meant by presentation that the board approves that you saw this. So it is on fresh.
So do I have a motion to approve the presentation?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll? Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Paj?
Yes.
Did approve the memorandum of understanding. I printed out my agenda before some of the... I printed out my agenda before some of the updates were made in it. Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
You two have had a long day. You should go home.
Absolutely.
Go.
Okay, I will launch my presentation.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave. We know these are long days.
All right, let me get back to the beginning. Okay. All right, so this report will capture updates from November aligned to the goals. I'll also try to address some of the things that were discussed in public comments, because there is some, some things that do apply in terms of what I'm going to share. Can you hear me okay, Mark? So the first thing I'd like to talk about is the work that's been happening, our academic work aligned to Goals One and Two. We started towards the end of November, Semester One meetings with our principals. These are meetings that are held twice a year. We also, in partnership with the Ed Services Team, do building walkthroughs with the BLTs at each of the schools. These meetings are an opportunity for the principals, and sometimes they'll have a staff member there to kind of pause and walk through the beginning of the year academic data, the trends that principals are seeing, the strategies that they're employing in order to address those trends, and any needed supports that they have from central office to help, help advance the work. As it relates to our primary schools, or elementary schools, rather, we look at data on primary literacy, fall MAP unit assessments. We also have an opportunity to hear some really creative best practices that schools are implementing this year, especially as it relates to addressing the academic and social-emotional needs. Also in these meetings, I always have a space where I ask the principals and the administrative teams to give me some feedback, just an open discussion, what's working well in the district and what isn't, because that back-and-forth two-way conversation is really important. So I do know the things that are on the hearts and minds of our principals. And so as it relates to an earlier comment about principals not being able to communicate, I do really try to make sure, not only in these meetings, but in weekly meetings, that principals have an opportunity to share the things that are on their hearts and minds and their needs too. I'll say that the parent is correct in that there was a request from a middle, a middle school principal to go remote that last week of break. I only heard from one principal, so I'm not quite sure where the other information is coming from. And we spoke about that. There were concerns based on multiple factors. One, the principal was going to be absent during that week. There were concerns, some needs around planning, and also wanting to make sure that the school was properly covered. Luckily, that week, it was, you know, great staff attendance. We also had team members from across the district come to provide some additional support as well. And I certainly understood, and I appreciate the fact that that administrator reached out and made that request, because I know that especially given this, right now with having a remote learning plan option, that people often want to, want to move to that if they see a need for it. One thing I really want to emphasize, though, is the decision to, to remove to remote learning is a complex decision. And we know from last year, looking at our academic and our social-emotional learning data, that when students move to remote instruction, they really suffer. And so we want it, we make that decision carefully, with lots of deliberation, and I really marshal the district resources as it relates to a school's needs, and that could be staffing, it could be a safety issue, so that we can keep our students in our classrooms learning as much as possible. So one thing I would encourage, I think it's really important when, when people do hear something, just to, you know, go directly to those administrators and have that conversation, you know, yourself with them, because I think, you know, we're a sizable district, and, you know, lots of things can get communicated, and I think people can make innocent assumptions, but I, what, what I don't want to do is misrepresent an interaction and an engagement that has happened. And I do think things sometimes, you know, people hear this or hear that, or, you know, et cetera. So just want to make sure that I do share that. As it relates to our Tygo Virtual Academy, we did extend our deadline. So families who are interested do have until Wednesday, January 5th to enroll in that. We also have posted for another TBA teacher, just in anticipation that we'll likely need another teacher for Tygo Virtual Academy. On the high school side, our, our CTE application window is open, and so the recruitment process has started. One thing I'll talk about at the high school that they've done during the high school and beyond goal-setting day was to offer students an opportunity to have an internal CTE fest where they could hear about all the CTE programs in a smaller setting for our ninth and 10th graders. So connected to that, we did on November 17th have a day of goal-setting and social, kind of personal development sessions for our ninth and 10th grade students. Students participated in workshops around graduation requirements, goal-setting, conflict resolution, career tech, college credit plus, and advanced placement. Both our administrative team and a team of teachers worked to develop that day, develop the workshops. And it was really an important opportunity for students to connect in a smaller group with just the ninth and 10th graders, because one thing that we have seen is that our underclassmen and their transition back are having a bigger struggle, likely because they had lots of upheaval as they were coming through middle school. So that was an opportunity to really do some personal development with those students. And then as I referenced before, the learning walks, each of the schools have had a learning walk with the administrators and the building leadership team, presenting the building leadership plan, and then the Ed Services Team conducted learning walks and gave feedback to the principals and the teachers on the work happening aligned to their building leadership action plans. It was a smaller group, kind of, you know, just given COVID, so the number of staff that typically walked was greatly reduced, just knowing that we're in a different situation. But I'm glad we were able to re-engage with this practice, because we really were not able to do this last year, and even the second half of, of the year before that due to COVID. As it relates to families and community engagement in Goal Three, we did host a COVID vaccination clinic for students on December 13th at Wiley. We had 60 participants who participated. That was the first shot, and the second shot dose will be on Tuesday, January 4th. We are actively looking for additional vaccination opportunities and booster opportunities, and as soon as we're able to secure those, we'll do that. Not quite sure how quickly that will happen, since there's such a demand right now, but we know that this is going to be kind of an ongoing need, and we just want to incorporate that, I mean, what we're offering to the community. Do you have a question?
I'm just happy that we had 60 students come to get their vaccinations. And yes, we need to make sure that we have some other opportunity, because more students will need to get vaccinated. And I mean, I'm hoping that over time, we have people banging on the door to come and get vaccinated.
Liz, do you think there might be an opportunity for us to extend the January 4th to also being a booster clinic?
I don't think a booster, maybe a first dose. I, I've asked, and I actually was trying to get boosters snuck in for the, the one in December 13th, but they weren't able to do that. But I'll, I'll continue to ask, you know, they said no before, but maybe on the 4th, especially now, kind of given our situation, they'll have more flexibility there, because I know there'd be a lot of interest, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Now, for the, for the second dose clinic on the 4th, is that going to be during the school day? Or in the afternoon after school?
It would probably be the same time that it was before, which I think was maybe two or something like that. I have to check this time.
So towards the end of the day?
Yeah. I can't, do you remember, Kate, then? Yeah, two to six.
Two to six, okay. I'm just thinking about transportation and how do students get here from presumably the high school and the middle school?
I think it was parents who were probably bringing kids and doing like...
So parents picked their kids up and brought them?
Yeah.
That might be some, that might be another thing for us to look at, that I wonder, I suspect a weekend might be easier for, for folks. Although I'm assuming. I, I don't know.
It may have been a metro health scheduling thing, but...
Right, yeah.
Right, obviously, we have to work within their guidelines.
Yes.
So in terms of the district fall, fall show, I know it seems like it was a long time ago, but Matilda the Musical was a huge success, sold-out show. Kudos to our staff who worked so hard with the students and put on a great show. We know that Mountaineer Musical is lots and lots and lots of hard work, and it really gives students, not only the opportunity to develop multiple skills, but just, you know, lifelong memories as well. So from, from, really from the music department, the art department, the acting department, the singing, the instrumentation, the coordination, the stage crew, all those pieces, just kudos to everyone for that. And so for this next part, I wanted to give some COVID updates. I talked a little bit about this last week. I did have a meeting with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health just this week, so I wanted to share takeaways from, from the Board of Health. And, you know, one thing I wanted to say before I start, as I said last week, we're making decisions about safety with COVID. We really rely on our health practitioners to provide us that guidance, because they are kind of seeing the numbers, seeing the trends. They're positioned best to, to give guidance and share information that's happening. So of course, no surprise, we know that our, the COVID cases are significantly up everywhere. And Omicron is, has, it's definitely in the state and nationally is now the, the more, the most frequent variant. We talked a lot about hospitalizations. The increase in hospitalizations in particular are a very big concern for the Board of Health, and they, one thing that they talked a lot about is how important it is to continue to push the message on vaccinations and boosters to everyone in schools and school districts and larger communities as well. They're seeing the hospitalizations primarily from those who are unvaccinated and are worried about the impact at the hospitals and, and certainly severe illness and death as well. At the time of our meeting, there is no change to their guidance to schools, so there is no, nothing from the state, also nothing from the county. They encourage schools to continue to implement their safety measures, and we will be reviewing our measures before school starts. I agree that we want to step up our messaging on masks, we want to step up our messaging on vaccinations, and look at the, we have enough PPE in place. Things like the shields, I know, do bring, people tend to have a sense of comfort with those, but the reason why we don't have the shields is actually a recommendation that came from health practitioners in terms of the fact that it actually could be something that would perhaps spread even more. So the only place that they advised us to use the shields were in the lunchrooms, which is why they came down. There are some teachers who have requested, there are very, very, very few parents who have, if any, who have requested shields, but, but we do offer that. But we, we definitely want to step up our efforts, you know, make sure that we just remind people of our protocols, because we know we're coming back from school, back from two weeks. Those things are really, really important.
Liz, it might also be good to remind people what we've done as far as HVAC systems, because we have done quite a bit there, and I know we talked about that, you know, when it was done, at the beginning of the year. But I think it's good to remind people that, you know, we have done the upgrades, we have the air purification and the air filters, that we have the exchanges, you know, the air exchanges set to the maximum that we possibly can as far as bringing outside air in, and that they're running 24/7.
Yes, yeah.
The shield piece, also, it's just, that's not just a Cuyahoga County thing, that was a statewide determination last summer, or at least multiple counties, because the same thing happened in Gioghi County, that the recommendation was to eliminate the shields unless, you know, the shields really became an individual circumstance for an individual student or, you know, a parent, and they all came down in my school too. Except in the cafeteria.
Yeah, I just remembered in the, the walks that we went through, the number of teachers that told us, and nobody said they wanted to keep the shields, they're all telling us, "Can these come down?"
Yeah, and I think it was the call that we were on, and I can't remember if it was the reopening call, but I think it was Dr. Meyer who had said the shields actually could impede the airflow when you've done all the changes with the HVAC system. And that was the reason to remove the shields, except where you're taking a mask off to eat lunch.
I, I do think it might be worth your, in your superintendent's calls, to ask if anybody's come across a method, a strategy to reinforce the consistent, appropriate mask-wearing. It's, I mean, it's a problem, I see it every single day at work. What Mrs. Wood described is absolutely the case in my building every single day, and it's just, you know, you, you are too often making a decision of whether or not you're going to proceed with your lesson, or you're going to constantly correct. One thing I will point out, though, that I think is worth looking into, if, if we're not doing it already, and if we are, forgive me, it is worthwhile having masks, since we have enough in particular, which we have to, in, available in each classroom, just in terms of saving kids' times in the hall. They do break, that's happened to all of us, so if we can get some back, backup masks, it wouldn't be your first stop for one, but if one does break, disintegrate, get sneezed horribly on, or whatever, you know, the human systems are not always glorious.
Well, I'm, I'm at Boulevard on Monday mornings, and they just hand out masks to all the children coming in, in the morning, so...
Great plan.
Which, on the one hand, it means that every child gets a mask, on the other hand, it means that you no longer stop to make sure you've got a mask in your pocket when you leave home. So, you know, it becomes whatever, but, but it's more important that every child have a mask. So there's, you know, somebody standing at the door just handing masks every morning, or at least every Monday morning, presumably the rest of the week as well, as the kids come in for the day.
And if we need TJ the Tiger to go around and show kids how to wear the mask again...
Oh, TJ is always willing to come around, right?
TJ could do that again in January.
Instead of in August?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
So just before...
I think we were volunteering.
Before I go to the district COVID cases, just, you know, like, not only masks, but also, you know, vaccine and the boosters, and students 16 and up can get the boosters as well, so just kind of getting that information out. So these next couple of slides share the current cases, district cases, from the past, starting right after Thanksgiving, November 29th. And so here, you'll see the cases by school, both for students, staff, and the number of students that are quarantined. And so an, an earlier comment indicated that the numbers were not accurate. We checked these multiple times and also report to the Board of Health, so if there is someone who has seen some inaccuracies, please reach out to me, and I'll follow up and, and look, look out, look out for that. That would be very helpful if there's something that we're missing in our reporting, but I really do ask for anyone who sees a number that's different, just to email me directly, and I'll go back and, and double-check it with our team and the Board of Health as well. And so you'll see here, I just, the, one reason I wanted to share this is just so that you can see that there's, it's different in schools.
Different buildings have very different numbers.
Yeah, different buildings have different numbers, and that really does inform the strategy that we have been using since the start of school. We have had some classrooms close in different buildings, based upon the number of students that were either positive or had to, you know, quarantine for close contact as well. So we have a process that we use there. There is an educational plan that's in place, and that is enacted when we have to do a classroom, a classroom closure. The closure decisions, and I talked about this last week, are based on evidence of spread. So when we start to see increase in numbers, we reach out to the Board of Health and ask them to take a look at our numbers, are they seeing something here which means we should consider a school closing? And I will continue to do that daily, and look at those numbers, and also look at the staffing numbers too as well. So when we consider a school or classroom closure, we're looking at, again, the numbers, the positive numbers, and also staffing in particular. We know the staffing issues, even in the hospitals, are, were really starting to creep up as being even a bigger challenge, and so we'll keep our, we'll continue to keep our eye on that. And that's one reason why we will continue to ask our families and our staff to report if they are positive, so that we know, so that we, we keep that in our numbers too. We're not... We're not required at this point to do the reporting through the Board of Health on break, but we want, we want to continue to get that information because that'll help us know what the, what the impact is at each of the schools. I do want to say to parents, and this has actually been the case from the beginning, I don't think parents necessarily know if their child is going to be a close contact and therefore has to, you know, come out of the school for a period of time to quarantine. We've had parents who have been, having to pivot and be nimble since the beginning of the year based on these classroom and school closures. And so I just want to say to parents that being nimble is going to continue to be important because we cannot, you know, look into the future at, at a particular school and anticipate what, what's going to be the case in terms of COVID or if there's a staffing issue too. So I really urge parents just to, just to kind of know moving forward with, when we have numbers going up, you could have a situation where your classroom or even your school, depending on the situation, may have to close, you know, for five day, 10 day window, something like that. So I want people just to, to be prepared for that, as they have been from the beginning of the year. And then I think I noted already wanting to make sure that the COVID notification team is, is informed of, of a positive case. And so we'll send, we're going to send a note out to families just with all this information. They'll continue to push and promote this as well. Couple of things I wanted to also talk about from, from the public comments. And one is in terms of the ESTER funds, we are going to have a presentation coming up in the new year where we'll talk about where we currently have spent our funds. And we'll talk about things like Tiger Camp. We have a, a big plan for, for tutors. We hire lots of teachers. We've hired social worker, nurse counselors, students, all those, lots of supports for students that we have in place or are getting in place in particular. So we'll, that is going to be coming up so people have that, have that information. And then the last thing I want to say is, as a superintendent, it is my responsibility to make sure that our students are safe. That is physically safe, safe from a social, emotional, learning perspective, and safe as it, as it relates to sexual violence, sexual assault. I am listening to the students. I appreciate the feedback and the public comments. We will continue to listen to students. This is actually a really valuable data for us to understand and experiences for us to understand as we formulate solutions. I know that it's important, for some of the initial, I, I was only able to have one meeting with the student group that during my listening session, and then we had to move from the threat. But some of the things that I heard from students include really wanting to make sure that people understand what the process of reporting is. Really wanting to make sure that students receive information about having appropriate relationships with each other. Really making sure that there are venues and platforms for students to be heard from administrators and teachers in an ongoing fashion. I know that there, there've been some initial things that have been planned. And even the, the policy on dress code, there've been meetings that actually started in the fall because the board actually, you all referenced wanting us to really take a look at the dress code last summer. So there has been some planning groups that, that have been happening at the high school kind of around that piece. But I will make sure that this is addressed. I will make sure that the, the needs that students have, K-12, as it relates to really understanding appropriate relationships and ensuring that parents, that, that students know the information that they need to know as it relates to these issues. It is my responsibility and it will get done. I know that people are concerned. I know that they are hurt. And I, I know that some of these issues, you know, go back, you know, years and years and years, but I'm the superintendent now and I'm going to address it. And so I, I do want to say that I don't want anyone to think that anything that they have said or experienced, people are not listening to. We are listening. I've had these discussions with my team and, and I, and I will continue to have these discussions as we mount a plan. But we do need to, the listening piece is important because I do want to make sure as we develop solutions and as we develop structures, that it's really responding, you know, to, to the needs out there. You know, I know that we have to do, Title IX continues to change, it changed in April. And, and I want to make sure that I'm doing a really good job of making sure all of our staff are really trained and really understand all the policies and procedures. And that is my responsibility and it will get done. So I just wanted to, to end with that statement and that concludes my report.
I'd like to add to that. I, I know you're committed to taking care of this. I'd like to see regular board updates though on it in, you know, future work session in January or February. I know we're waiting feedback. I know everybody's on vacation right now, so it's hard to get that now. But get feedback and if you can, basically get that to us as well. The Rape Crisis Center reached out to us earlier today, offering their support and help with how we handle all the Title IX stuff. So I'd like an update on that too, if you can give it to us.
And Liz, there are a couple of parents I told you that work in this space that have offered their assistance. I'll send you names to connect with those parents. And I thank you for that. I also think that we should explore, I know that, you know, I'm not one to say let's just throw money at the problem or add staff, but I really do think we should explore the idea of possibly having a single Title IX officer. Right now that job is, you know, it's split up amongst a couple of people who already have full-time roles. I know, you know, we need to do some root cause analysis, but that's something that if we did decide should happen, that we should have a dedicated Title IX officer, I would be in support of that. Because I think in addition to investigations and helping our students and our staff and being available to listen, that person could also be working on proactive plans and prevention and not just be in a reactive mode. So I just want you to know that I would support that if that ends up being the decision that we think is the right way to go.
One thought is that a Title IX officer who's dedicated to that would also better understand the differences between that system and the juvenile justice system. And there are small sections of overlap, but they are completely different worlds with completely different sets of requirements. And, and what happens in the school building is very different than what, than what happens once you walk into a police station and that whole process. So. And, and we as a district need to focus on doing what we do as best as possible.
I, I kept hearing throughout the presentations today that the students felt some of the words that sort of rang and, and, you know, they felt dismissed, they felt belittled. And, and. So I think it's really important that as we talk about trainings, it's critically important to train our students, but it's also really critically important to train our admin and, and to get refreshers of all of these things. Because, you know, it, this is a communications piece, this is a sensitivity piece. And sometimes our expressions don't communicate what's in our heart, you know? I mean, we've all, I think, probably fallen into that once or twice and, and where we just sort of are outwardly projecting something that's being interpreted, not the way that we intended it to be. So I think that it's really important for us to begin there because that is where I am hearing our students are feeling most disappointed. And I think that working with somebody like the Rape Crisis Center would be a, a great start for that work. And then also I do think that it needs, we need to find, I think Title IX coordinator is a great thing to do too, but we need to find a place for this content to live in our students' lives repeatedly as they progress through our schools. So there needs to be programming at elementary, middle, and high school. And it needs to just really be ever-present if there was somebody like a Title IX coordinator who could actually be out participating in this training at all three levels. That would also be, that person would become known as the, here's who I need to turn to. Everybody knows that this is the person I need to turn to. Sort of institutionalized through the person, which I think is really important also. Initial reactions.
Any other conversation about this? Moving on to the president's report, we had a very constructive retreat last Saturday. One of the things that we sort of did a deep, deep dive in was discussing our racial equity policy. And there was a few things that we started talking about and then we decided that we thought it would be best to just sort of stop and continue that conversation here. And basically that conversation started with a presentation that Jody Yu attended at OSBA at Capitol Conference. We get a lot out of hearing what other school districts do and even listening to the state Board of Education and their ideas. You want to just quickly go over what you learned?
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the sessions that I attended that I thought was one of the best was one on conducting an equity audit. And the purpose of conducting the equity audit is, you know, the, the woman who gave the presentation, Almitra Berry, talked about how if you don't have a plan, how do you know if you're going to get there? So she talked about school districts that do a lot of equity work, but they don't really know what their ultimate goal is. So when you do the equity audit, it kind of gives you a roadmap and it gives you a framework for what are the, you know, what are the steps you want to take? What are the goals you're trying to achieve? What order are you trying to achieve it in? And how are you going to measure it to know that you've been successful? So she is the partner for the Ohio School Boards Association that does the, you know, she's like the official vendor for doing equity audits. But it was a comprehensive program that looked at all of the stakeholders and what they expected, making sure you had a unified definition about what, when you say equity, what you mean. And making sure that if you're going after things in equity, that they're the things that you are prioritizing and the things that, you know, you care most about and the things that you feel that you can truly affect. So I would recommend that we reach out to Dr. Berry and consider doing an equity audit for our district. We've done some work around equity. We have a policy. We've done lots of training. But beyond that, I mean, what's our plan going forward? And I would really like to see us have a comprehensive plan going forward. So we know what we're trying to affect. We know if we're affecting it. We know where our successes are and we know what we have to do. I mean, otherwise I think we're going to be sitting here and, you know, another year or two years and we're still going to be asking, well, how many people are trained? What are we doing beyond training? And, and that's where I want to see our equity work go.
Makes a ton of sense to me.
I think we have hard targets in the new five-year plan, which are very specifically about educational equity. And we could pull those out and put them on, on a separate slide, for example, instead of having them be spread out. But I think the, the process for the strategic plan refresh was really intended to put equity in everything and not have it be a separate page. You know what I mean?
No, I agree with that.
And, and so there's a lot everywhere. And. I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm a little torn. I mean, yes, I think an equity audit could be useful, but I think that it may just show what we already have sprinkled everywhere.
Well, it's probably appropriate to share that information with Lisa Hunt and her team. We have annual report backs to this board about where we are with the equity implementation. We also have measurements on the strategic plan and we know that this is really the first year where we're starting to get some numbers back.
Yeah.
And we know it's a little bit more than just number of people that get trained. So I'm real curious to see how all this is going to work, but it certainly would be nice to have like, I, I know our staff has always been looking for a roadmap or a, a scorecard or something to implement. And this is after Dr. Dixon first had his vote on this policy. And we're, the only thing we really had to track were num, were numbers. I mean, how many people got the training? So I just think it's a tool, it's another tool that our staff can use.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we have to go beyond the training. And, and we can easily, we can easily do, keep those, those tally marks going, but it's, it's about, the, the training is, is to what end? And how are we, how are we doing?
We're already starting to see the end, right? I mean, if you look at the numbers of students who are taking AP classes and you look at the AP test scores they're getting, that increase is the result of the equity training that started X number of years ago, right? So, and the thing is that it doesn't look like a direct, a straight line correlation because the path takes a while.
But it's related, yes.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, so we are, we do have things we can affect and we are starting to affect them and that's great, right? We just want more of that. We want that to continue long-term.
The other thing that was interesting about the equity audit was she talked about, you know, how it would identify barriers and roadblocks.
Now that sounds good.
And then you can identify, you know, you, you can work on strategies on overcoming those barriers. So it was interesting. I mean, I, I would say at the very least, you know, we should look at the information. I know Dr. Berry has a lot of videos and things that are available that would explain it better than I can in a three to five minute discussion here, but it's at least something worth exploring. I thought it was a really good presentation. It was something that piqued my interest mainly because I like to see what a plan is and, and where you're trying to go and, you know, what you ultimately want to achieve.
So. What's the thought? Are we, from here, are we looking to sort of pursue this or?
I provided some information to Liz to take a look at and to share with her staff.
Yeah, I, I really think it's in the hands of staff at this point.
Great, okay.
Just to report back along the same lines, just to report out to, to you as my peers. Last Tuesday, I, I went down to Columbus and I spoke in front of the state school board regarding our racial equity policy, why we passed it. It was actually a three-minute public comment. And then for the next 30 minutes, there was a discussion between myself and pretty much the entire state board on why it's important to have racial equity policy. We know from talking to other state board members and other presidents of other school boards that there is interest, political interest to negate the whole need of equity in schools. And we need to get, we need to stop that. We need to explain why these policies are important, why they can be successful. I mean, you look at our AP honor roll distinction from the college board and it is because we have a racial equity policy that we have that distinction. And these are sort of like the, the things that I wanted to make sure that our state board members, many of them are appointed, political appointees, many of them are folks that are not in any education. They haven't, they haven't run, they haven't had kids in public schools, they, they don't understand the importance. And. And, you know, part of our role is to work outside of our district as much as it is working inside the district. I have nothing to add to the President's Report. Do we have any board committee reports?
I mentioned Lake Facilities Committee earlier.
Unfinished business?
It's not unfinished business, but I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Mr. Heim, who is the orchestra instructor, and Mr. Stu Ferris for being part of the Cavani Quartet. Last Tuesday, it was a wonderful concert. I think 12 to 14 of our kids performed with the Cavani String Quartet, along with students from Cleveland School of the Arts, Lakewood, and Strongsville. And this was all down at Severance Hall and it was really an amazing, beautiful concert. And this was done above and beyond their normal schoolwork. And it was nice to also see Mr. Heim and Mr. Ferris performing with our kids. And I just want to thank them for making that opportunity happen for our kids.
Thank you, Jody. And similarly, as we, as Liz briefly mentioned, Matilda. You know, I just, I, I, when I was at High-Tai, involved in the Vocal Music Department, you know, it just occurred to me that, you know, these are the friends that these kids will have for the rest of their lives. And these, these things that we offer to our students that are really immeasurable in a lot of ways, you know? They don't appear on any state report card. But these are the opportunities that change kids' lives, that enrich kids' lives. That, those, performing on the, on the stage at Severance Hall will be a memory that those kids and a feather in their cap for the rest of their lives. And performing in Matilda will be a memory and the friendships built will be memories and friendships that last for the rest of their lives because they did something just so giant, so much bigger than they would have ever done outside of that opportunity. So it's just a really wonderful thing that this community still values that enough to continue to support us and allow us to bring those opportunities to our kids and that we have an incredible staff that goes so far above and beyond regularly. And as much as we try to recognize and, and award to the degrees that we can with recognitions, it's just every opportunity to remind ourselves and the community of the blessings of those professionals is a good opportunity.
And it was also really exciting to see live performances in our auditorium for both our band and our orchestra concerts that happened in November. It was great to be able to have live music again in our auditorium.
Amen.
New business? Correspondence and announcements? May I have a, may I have a notion, motion to adjourn?
Aye, motion, we adjourn.
Aye, second.
Mr. Gainer, would you call the rule? Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heim?
Yes.
Ms. Sereni?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.